Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the November eighteenth twenty twenty five meeting of the Newcastle Town Board. The board has been an executive session. Oh, we apologize for starting a bit late. Uh may I have a motion to open the public work session?
So moved.
Secondly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye. Okay, we are gonna start off the work session with the quarterly financials.
Alright, good evening everyone. Um so uh back at it a little bit later than usual because of our budget process. But um this is our regular report we follow up on where we are uh budgetarily for twenty twenty five. Um I think Lauren's got the slides. If Lauren's able to pull them up there and you have the work packets uh as well. I'll wait for them to.
Very funny.
Good. So for most of the board, I think a lot of these items we probably went over uh during the budget process itself. Um as we were reviewing the uh current due date uh where many of these lines stood. Um and just a reminder before we jump into this, this is only through September. So in many of these cases uh we have seen uh some other payments come in or payments be made. I'll point those out as we as we go through there. But this is only the numbers through September thirtieth. So if you're looking at it from a linear projection, we'd be looking for things to be around seventy five percent um as you just sort of go across. Um and here we go. So I'll start off with the general fund. Um as you can see on the slide, uh as of nine thirty, our expenses were about nineteen million or seventy percent of our budget. And our revenues were twenty million six hundred thirty five thousand, about thirty uh I'm sorry, uh seventy six percent of the budget. So as I said, linearly, kind of on that trend line. Uh of course, we like to see revenues um being a bit higher than expenses. So always positive there. Um on the next page, jump in a little bit further on the expense highlights. Um several of these you saw in the second quarter update, namely the bond principal. That's uh just a a timing due to the bond payments. Those are done now for the year. Um so those are fully expended. Uh police overtime is new. Um that number is largely driven by police protection requests. So for example, the uh road work that you see happening on Bedford Road where there is a police officer helping with traffic direction. We are being reimbursed uh or we are re uh billing Con Edison for that uh and getting a significant amount of revenue. I think the last check I saw just came in last week. Uh but so while overtime is up, we you'll see on the next page, police protection revenue is up as well. Um and recreation supplies, this again a continuation from the second quarter report. Um the supplies and the uh the camp costs are up, but so is our revenue. So these are mostly tied together.
Yeah, I'll just I'll I'll mention that part of the reason is that we added another bus to the travel camp this year. So that uh that added a significant amount on the expense side, but also on the revenue side.
Correct. And while, you know, uh one hundred forty percent or two hundred thirteen percent uh number may look a little scary when it comes to the um the uh scope of it, the scale of it compared to the revenues. Um it's uh it's not nearly as scary and we'll see that on the next page uh when we get there before we jump off of this. Uh state retirement still outstanding. Unfortunately, our our last payment will be due shortly. Um.
December fifteenth.
Yeah, so we'll uh we just got the invoice in. We'll make that payment at that time, but those will be anticipated before the end of the year. So um still sizable coming through. On the revenue side, as I as I said, the um recreation program's up uh in line with that. And again, one hundred and forty percent of uh one hundred seventy two thousand uh when it comes to the the scope and the size of it. Uh we're talking about a revenue of one point two million. So um you know, percentages don't tell the only story. You need to look at the dollar numbers too. Um we are up when it comes to the camps and the recreation programs. Building permits have continued apace. Uh we have not seen any sort of decline there. In fact, we are now over our projected budgeted revenues for the entire year as of the third quarter.
Is that no longer driven by or still being driven by Reader's Digest or is what way past?
I don't think that we've seen many Reader's Digest permits coming through. I think we've closed out most of them at this point.
We're close. We're uh there's a handful left that I think uh that remain.
Yeah.
For the most part. That revenue source will end, but we've got the department as a whole is just very busy and they're.
Pe- yeah, people are buying houses and immediately beginning projects.
Yep.
Um it is not the case where an increase in the price, the market price for a house has has driven down um people doing projects. So.
I think I think Jeremy's question and you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that we were saying that the building permits were up because of the Chapel Crossing project. We're attributing it to that. So um you know, I think it's a good question, good to note that they've they maintained their
Yeah, they maintain that and we projected going forward over the next couple of years with Fifty North Greeley coming online.
Their current increase.
There will be fees associated with that and there's other building projects um in the development department that are bringing in fees too.
Yeah.
So it's yes, correct. Over a period of years, um we had ninety one building permits to issue there for for the residential alone. And uh prior to that, we had commercial building permits to issue. So um but we do think that the permit revenue is gonna remain strong going ahead.
Yeah, yeah. My apologies. I took that that question to be, do we think it's going to dry up now that now the Chapel Crossings is done? And and I don't think that's the case. I I I think it will probably be consistent going forward.
Right.
And I think that's reflected in the the twenty twenty six uh budgeted revenue where we see a um I think conservative increase in that line. Nothing crazy, but
Yeah.
um you know, reflecting that we still see a strong market for that.
Yeah, and that was based on our conversations with the development department and kind of what's in the pipeline, what they see ahead.
Yeah. Correct. Um uh to continue forward, uh police protection, as I mentioned already, at a hundred and five percent of the annual budget. And again, only through nine thirty, we continue to bill uh Con Edison and receive payments from them for their um use of our police officers at the uh Bedford Road work.
Carl?
Of.
Yes.
Oh, is that a one for one? We bill for exactly what we pay?
I would have to check with.
No, it's not. So uh it it's a rate that includes fringe benefits um for staff as well as equipment costs.
Okay.
So there's a there's a rate that we come up with each year that we bill outside uh entities, primarily the utility companies that request our police officers. Um so it's not a one for one. And I'll say in that police protection line, there's a budgeted amount each year. It's a half million give or take. That's the amount that the school district reimburses the town. So that's the amount that we know that we're guaranteed based on the contract. Um why that number goes over budget is because we never know when we're gonna get a request from a utility to uh to provide uh traffic control or how long it's gonna be. So um so you will see the an increase on the expense, an increase on the revenue side. Um but that's why the the baseline for that police protection line is the uh school resource officers.
Yes.
And not to take us too far off topic, but um is it just completely at the utilities discretion as to whether they want to hire?
I it's the type of work that they may be doing and and um you know, if it's a some of these tree companies, if they're in town for a day or half a day and they're cutting down a tree, they probably won't. If it's a longer term project like Con Edison, um where they're doing tree work or pole replacement or gas line replacement, they typically do require. Uh and that would be um that's a decision that I think is left to Bart and to the police chief as to whether or not they would recommend that um.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay. Um and then finally, before we go into the uh notable categories, interest earnings. As of nine thirty, uh we're at a hundred and twenty four percent of our um of our budgeted revenue in the general fund, four hundred thirty one thousand. Um and that's again sort of a repeat of our second quarter update. Uh we've uh been very uh fortunate to be in a a positive cash position in town and able to reinvest those funds in a vehicle called NY Class, which is open to us as a municipality of New York State. Um and we um have taken advantage of the very competitive interest rates there. Um how much longer we continue to be able to take advantage of those remains to be seen. We've seen uh what, two rate cuts already this year? Very least two at the time I've been overseeing the funds. Um so we we are continuing to see in interest revenue. It is slowing down though. Um so it isn't something that we should be um you know, balancing our budget on by any stretch, but um it is good to be able to take advantage of that. So and you'll see that across the other funds as well. Um notable category is outstanding in the general fund that we anticipate uh receiving sales tax distribution. This is only two of the four payments that's reflected here. The third payment came in last week. Uh about one point two million give or take. We're uh on target to exceed the sales tax uh budgeted amount within our budget, assuming that the fourth quarter uh ends up anything like it did last year. Uh and mortgage tax as well. We're anticipating, I believe, two more payments on that as well. Um.
Yes.
Yeah, so. Um alright, any other questions there?
Actually, I do have a question about sales tax.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um you know, we're talking about the the utilities in town and things like that. So um is the sales tax that we get based on the actual sales in town? Or is it just a portion of what's collected? How is that allocated?
It it's a portion of what's collected throughout the county outside of and I don't know, Rob, if you know the municipalities that have preempted. I don't.
White Plains, Yonkers, uh it's the cities, Pico.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, so all the cities have. So any other towns mostly?
But so it's a per it's a percentage of the county. It gives the localities, it's on the fourth percent. What what is their? It's a pretty generous percentage.
Yeah. Yeah, based on it's on population. Uh it's based on the population. So they they take you the popular, our uh population here as a percentage of the overall population of the market, I guess, exempting the cities. And then um it's all the sales tax collected through the county. It's not just what's collected in the town.
Yeah, yeah. So and I I've just noted this point as well that uh the town has been uh I don't know, conservative is is the right word, but cautious in the way that we have used uh and budgeted for sales tax um in order to balance the budget. Um sales tax has kind of exploded over the last few years, particularly as internet sales became eligible to be taxed. Um and you know, as now we started receiving it. Um I know that there's been some talk of, you know, um maybe not doom and gloom, but talk about how sales tax revenues aren't uh keeping a pace um with budgeted amounts. Uh that is not the case here. We've been much more cautious and much more conservative. Um we are on pace to, as I said, exceed what our current budgeted amounts are. Other governments may not have been, but um we are. So we're in a kind of very fortunate case where we're not seeing a budget shortfall um throughout the year. So.
And that's we've talked about this before in the auditorium mentions too. We budget conservatively for most things because it's very difficult to make up revenue. Um it's difficult to get to November at this time and look at these numbers and say, we're short on revenue. What do we do? What can you do at this point? There aren't many expenses that you could cut in the final two months of the year to make up for a revenue shortfall.
Alright, so moving on to highway fund. Um our twenty twenty five budget uh is about six million dollars. Our expenses at seventy percent of the total budget as of nine thirty and revenue at eighty six point nine percent of the budget. Uh moving into the uh expense highlights, again, repeat from the uh second quarter, mostly bond principal and overtime. Uh overtime largely driven by snow removal overtime within the first quarter um of the year. Um so uh again, that has remained flat uh since the second quarter update. Uh notable expenses remaining, uh the road paving program. We've only paid about fifty percent of those invoices so far. I believe we're just waiting on the final uh closeout documentation to to pay the remaining fifty percent. And state retirement, again, we will make that payment uh in December, so that will come due as well. Um no areas where we think we will see massive savings within the um expenses. Uh when it comes to revenues, um on the next page, again, same story with the interest earnings in the general fund. We're at uh two hundred and eighty six percent of our annual budget, so we continue to take advantage of that there. Um and snow and ice removal, right now, we are working on reconciling the state payments for snow and ice removal. We received uh compensation from the state for uh work done on state roads. Uh the county is very good about paying us in a timely manner. Uh we're currently chasing down the state on some of those payments. So I do anticipate those coming in. We believe we found one. We're trying to find a second one at this point. Um but.
And the board just approved at the last meeting the uh revised number for, I think, the twenty five twenty six season.
Yes.
Um they revised it upwards, a couple thousand, eighty thousand, I think. I mean, they're originalized it.
Yeah. So Bart's been Bart's been in contact with the state and we're trying to to reconcile all of this. I I think we'll keep just fine. Uh no notable category is outstanding. The uh CHIPS state aid, um the full amount is outstanding. We submitted the claim um when the town board approved the road program earlier this year, was higher than the four hundred twenty five thousand increase there. Um we did submit to the state uh for five hundred uh thirty nine thousand, so that should be coming in uh shortly. And then um I'm trying to remove the appropriate fund balance line here. Uh we don't appropriate the fund balance until the end of the year uh just so we don't overappropriate what we need. So um there's a hundred thousand that depending on how other revenues look and how expenses look, we may or may not need. Moving on to refuse fund. Um this fund has seen almost all of its revenue um come in already, ninety seven point nine percent and expenses at sixty seven point eight percent of budget. Digging into the expenses, again, bond principal is the uh only one that really sticks out that we're at a hundred percent of the total um payments that we have to make. And then notable expenses outstanding, uh transfer site charges. Uh we still see probably about another two hundred sixty seven thousand of those coming through. And state retirement remains consistent here as well. That will all just be paid out in December. For revenues, uh as I mentioned, most of our annual revenue has been received. Interest again, uh leading the way, uh well above budget for one hundred sixteen percent. Compost and mulch sales, I think as Mike mentioned during the the budget hearing for the refuse fund, um are we are seeing a lot of demand for the uh compost and mulch sales. So uh that doubled this year what our anticipated budget was, which is great. Um and I think to that end, the vertical uh or I'm sorry, the horizontal grinder uh assisted in getting uh a lot more of that out the door. Um and then yard waste revenue uh has uh reached the full budget capacity. So um refuse, only all the funds were as easy as refuse, it seems. Uh finally, the water fund, uh twenty twenty five budget of about ten million. And we're at sixty two percent of the budget for expenses and revenues at seventy two percent. Uh if you'll remember from the second quarter update, this fund was a little more um anemic at that time. We had not seen our peak season yet. Um we're still going through it. We're still reconciling some of the September payments uh at this time. Uh September through November or is it August or November seem to be the biggest times for revenues to flow in. Um so I it is much better to see this at seventy two percent now. Uh I think our very wet spring was uh and our our concerns for revenue at that time were alleviated by a very dry end of the summer. So.
Yep. Yeah, and understanding there's a lag in the billing. So if we're going out and reading the meter right now,
Yeah.
um look back three months and that's what it pertains to. So you're you're looking at, you know, September, October, November. There's dry months. So um this will probably be the last big month and it'll start to slow down now.
Yeah. Uh as for expenses, um again, bond principal, um overtime has uh been up a little bit as um I I believe talking with Bart, there were some projects that the the staff were working on at the water filtration plant. Um and I think there's still a few more that the town board will see before the end of the year. Um just trying to, you know, kind of improve the facilities there and the equipment.
Yeah, there's some uh overhauling the ozone generators system. Uh that has taken some staff time. Um the uh the generator that while it's installed and it's working, they've had to do some electrical work to install a switch so that they can um so that it switches over, I think, automatically or or they have the option to switch it manually or automatically. So I know they just recently installed that, so.
And I think they just replaced another one of the filters that were original to the plant as well. So.
Yeah, media filters, yep.
Yeah, so. Um so there's been some some good upgrades happening there. Um and filter plant materials, that is, we tend to place large orders for the filter plant materials. Um when they when they're needed, uh demand went up during August, so there were more materials required. Um I don't know how many more uh orders we'll see before year end. I'll see if I can get a update from or on that. Uh as for expenses remaining, uh treatment chemicals, we still have a sizable amount that we will probably go through before the end of the year. We have about a hundred thousand remaining in the budget. Um and uh the Veolia contract, we've only paid about uh sixty percent of it, so another forty percent remains. And again, state retirement is looming. So uh at this point, nothing particularly to think that we're gonna come along with savings on expenses. Uh as for the revenues, again, interest earnings, top of the line there, uh with a hundred and forty thousand in interest earnings. Um and uh just to break down some of the consumption revenues, year to date, these are the numbers that have picked up greatly since our last update. Uh general sales, again, we're still about uh we're still lagging there, but we're at sixty six percent. Whereas last time I reported, we were at about twenty seven percent if memory serves. So you can see a big pickup just over the last three months. Uh and then Mount Pleasant and IBM are uh some of the larger consumers that we have that we built uh separately. And uh they've picked up uh pace. So we are on pace to do well with the general revenues there. Alright.
Okay.
I think I kept my promise of keeping it relatively warm.
Perfectly boring.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was perfectly interesting. Thank you. Does anyone have specific questions?
That's what we want. Yes. Alright.
Any others um questions? Thank you, Carl.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Alright.
Okay, and now we're going to have our third quarterly update for capital projects.
Okay, uh I provided the board um the I sent to a separate email today just to kind of highlight it. It's included in the packet, but in case you wanna go back and reference it. Um this is kind of just an outline. I followed along the same outline that Jill used the last couple of years. I'm continuing the outline. Uh I'm not gonna re-verbatim because then I'll bore you even more than I used to bore you with finances. But uh so we'll go over the projects and if you have any questions, um we can talk. So uh first are some of the FEMA projects that we have and and the first one is the Upper Minko Dam, which is something we've heard about for years and years. Uh to update the board, the last quarter, we found out that unfortunately the uh the scope of the project that we had that was designed for us by Tectonic, we had some feedback from the Army Corps of Engineers and the uh uh New York State uh D E C. And uh unfortunately, the the scope has to be revised. There was some issue with some uh with removal of the sediment or or non-removal of the sediment. We're required now once the dam is de-watered to remove the sediment uh that was on the bottom and and it has to be taken off site. We originally had the FEMA brick grant, which was covering uh most if not all of the cost of this uh project. The project then uh I think multiplied by about three. It's up in the four million dollar range, although we don't have a final estimate at the moment. Tectonic is still in the redesign phase. Um we did recently submit a grant or uh about a year ago submitted a grant uh as part of the state's Environmental Bond Act. Uh unfortunately, we weren't granted funding through that. Um in our uh our debrief after the uh determination, you know, they let us know that we actually had a very strong application. The problem was the volume of applications in the pocket, uh the pool of money was uh too small for the amount of applications they had. So they do expect to be offering uh opening that up again soon. They suggest we reapply. Uh they suggested a couple of uh changes that we could do to strengthen our application and uh we intend to do that. Uh well, we're also continuing to look for other funding sources. Uh at this point, we're just waiting for Tectonic to finish their redesign so that we can finally go on to bid for this project and and uh maybe not complete it, but at least start the actual work on it. Uh some good news on the next one, the pedestrian bridge replacement uh on Route one twenty. The board last week approved uh McNamee as the uh consultant or the uh contractor to install that bridge as well as the Duck Pond Bridge. Um I think late last week, Jeff, uh engineer Jeff Gaspar and town staff met with McNamee for the kickoff meeting. Um based on the feedback that they got there, we will have uh the timeline that we can give to the board soon. But it's good to see some movement on that project. Um that project was originally, I believe that was was one of the eyes, whether it was Isaias or Ida. I don't recall, but it was one of the hurricanes that came through the uh town uh in about, I think it was twenty one or twenty two. And um so we were granted full funding for the project at that time. Uh I think we're still hopeful and we believe that they will uh s- still fully fund the project, although the new estimate on that is higher than it than the original estimate. But uh we do meet with them on a regular basis uh to update the project and they're aware of the change to the program. So um good news there. Uh the Byram Lake Road culvert replacement, some good news there too. We had been waiting. Uh that was in the hands of the New York State D E C for the review. We did receive our comments back from the New York State D E C. Uh town staff is currently reviewing them. It looks like we may need a small redesign. Uh I think the uh with the culvert might be a little small based on uh based on what the feedback is. So uh we did have two other issues that were uh were resolved. We have two properties there that we need consent release to be able to access the uh the culvert itself. Uh one property we need to uh we need the access for ongoing maintenance. The other property, we need to actually enter the property to do the uh uh to do the work. So uh we did receive approval for both of those, so that project is moving forward. Uh the Sheller Road Slope Stabilization Stormwater Improvements, that project was completed over the summer. I left it on here. I will remove it in the next report, but it has been completed and it has now been closed out. Uh the Bedford Road Pump Station, uh we are replacing uh the generator there. The pumps, the motors and the motor control center. I think all of that equipment was uh original to that pump station. Uh there was a very long lead time for the parts for that project. We recently were informed the parts became available and the contractor, Tam Enterprises, uh began to mobilize on uh November tenth. So the work in the fall was going to include pouring the slab, uh placing the generator on the slab. And I think that's all they're gonna get to this fall. They will pause over the winter and the intention is to remobilize on March fifteenth. Um they estimate the completion date to be April thirtieth on that project. The trenchless water main, um this is a replacement of the water main that goes uh underneath uh the train station parking lot under the Sawmill River Parkway and Metro North. And as you can imagine, it's pretty intricate and we need a bunch of different approvals from different authorities to be able to do work in that area. Um we needed to run some test borings to determine the composition of um the earth underneath that. And that they need to know that to determine what type of of um I think boring equipment that they need to to build the tunnel. So um we've done our two borings. The third test boring unfortunately is one that they're requiring us to hand dig and they're only giving us a few hours to do it and uh it's sensitive. It's close to the railroad tracks. So we have the approval for that. Um we need to, the the contractor needed to provide their insurance certificate and they haven't yet done so. So um that project is basically designed. Um we're waiting for the final results and and they'll be able to complete the design for that. Uh s- the cement lining of water mains, uh Bart has identified a couple of different areas. Uh Kathleen Lane, Daly Cross Road, Horseshoe Road, uh Valley View Road, Brookside Circle, High Point Circle, uh Lakeview Adams and Possum Roads. Uh staff is currently working on the R F P to complete that work. Uh the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, the heating oil tank replacement project. Uh we're uh replacing, I think this is our last existing underground oil tank and or fuel tank in the town. Uh this will move that to above ground. We just awarded the engineering contract within the last couple of weeks to Liro Engineers uh to begin the design work for that project. Uh the Quaker Road Water Main Replacement Project, so the uh town, the the county has uh they're extending the sewer trunk line up um Quaker Road. The town is partnering while they while they already have the road uh opened, the town will go in and replace the water main there. Uh replacing six inch water mains with a ten inch main. Um our project goes from Hunt's Place to Quaker Friends, uh Meeting House. Um that has kind of been stalled. Um the county has told us they're not going to begin work on that until the um sewer relief project at Joan Coral Way, just because of the traffic disruption and the disruption to the neighbors that will be in that area. Uh the Joan Coral Way project, they continued to push the date back. Uh this is a county project. It's not the town's. Um that originally was supposed to, the bids were supposed to be returned by June. Um that originally was supposed to, the bids were supposed to be returned by June. They have extended it four or five times, the bids are now due back in December. So um hopefully, we'll have a better idea once that project starts to be able to work on the timing for the uh Quaker Road Water Main Replacement. Uh I mentioned a moment ago, the Millwood Water Treatment Plant, the generator replacement, that is there, it's been installed. Um we were just getting some final wiring and supplies to complete the switching project. Uh that's expected to be closed out by the end of the year, our uh electrician is working on that. Uh the Chappack Solar Installation, the panels are installed, that's complete. Uh we had a couple change orders to add some snow guards and critter guards uh to kinda protect uh the panels and to protect the snow guards. We realized that the snow could build up on the panels and then fall on somebody below, so we have snow guards put in. Uh those were completed. Um the panels are in place and are operational. We currently have an issue with the wifi connection there. Um they had to hardwire it and something happened to the connection, so we're not getting feedback, we're not getting the data on what we're generating and what we're saving there. We should see it in the electric bill, because it is generating, um the solar panels are working, but we just don't have the feedback uh to register how much that is, so they're
And you ca- can that be fixed?
Yeah, the electrician's out there, they're working on that currently, yep.
It's not the wifi to the whole
It's not, the no, cause that the wifi works to the Chappack, so what it is, they couldn't reach where the panels are
The chap pack. Right.
or the electrical panel for the panels. The wifi, the connection wasn't great, so they decided to hardwire that in. And for whatever reason, it was working for a short period of time and then it stopped working.
Mm-hmm.
So uh we have our town electrician Dan Rubino's out there troubleshooting to try to determine what what we can do. Uh so the other project going on at the Chappack uh is the um the drainage improvements were completed, that parking lot, the handicap parking lot was completed. And we're waiting to complete that final walkway. And board will remember, we actually had to remove the engineer uh from that project. We could not get uh an acceptable design for that pathway. There's a slope on that and uh he each time they designed it and our town staff, Miguel uh Fabril in particular from town, they just, it was not acceptable. So working with our town attorney, we uh removed them from the project and we actually designed that in-house. Uh the board recently completed the change order based off of those revised plans and DMB construction was expected to begin yesterday, based on my notes.
Do you have an estimate on how long it how long it'll take?
I
It's been looking like that for a long time.
It has, I I I don't think there's much work to do, I think a couple weeks at most, um yeah.
Okay.
But that was the problem, they the slope was too great and every time they went out there and measured it and we could not understand why the engineer who was a licensed engineer was understanding what the problem was. Uh so ultimately, we agreed to disagree and and they walked away and we designed it in-house.
And also in that area, there is uh I think it's Con Ed, um they put a a a very ugly um
Oh yes, I know.
I'm not sure what it's called.
I I know, the green box, I don't know.
Okay. It's a green box and they decided to, you know, put it front and center.
I know.
And I'm just hopeful that we can do something to mask that, whether that's a, you know, monitor like advertising upcoming shows. You know, we've talked, we've talked about that before, but it would be great, I don't know, maybe um the arts and culture could think of a, you have a great idea?
Well, actually, I've I've already planted the seed with the B A B, the B A B.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
That that would be great.
There's some plantings.
Um plantings for like a s- as Vicky was saying, a screen that
Okay.
um a monitor that says what upcoming shows, it'll be like a point of advertisement and excitement for what's going on in Chappack. Uh maybe, I think you said Walter could maybe viewify it.
Um Walter's pretty good, I mean, I I thought we were talking about maybe some fencing, um like he did over at the uh at the train station
Right. Yeah.
where they put the heat pump in and it was kinda unsightly, so Walter uh put together some fencing there.
Uh but if if we could camouflage it with a screen and something actually useful, it would be great for people to be driving by, walking by and seeing upcoming shows and
Yeah. Yeah.
that would attract, you know, more, you know, more attendance.
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, we would just have to be aware, I I don't know what access they need to that
Right, right.
and what what types of clearances they need to access that box, so I think we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, and maybe we could put plantings around it too.
Yeah, I was wondering that too, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you Jen, I'm glad um I'm glad people are starting to think about it.
Yeah.
It's a nice art, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Uh the Millwood Park, uh the ADA access to the playground, that project has been closed out. All the bills have been paid for that, the the walkway looks great. Um the chap line, great news, uh updated the board last week. Um they were on site again Thursday and Friday, walking that with Dennis. Uh Dennis was happy with the consultants that they had, uh he thought they were very knowledgeable. Um he did think that they identified a few more wetlands than we thought to be existing, but Dennis didn't feel like that was a problem, it was just to be incorporated into the design. So uh I think they're done with their field work now for this fall and they'll go back to the office and uh and begin the design work for the project. We'll get a a final surveying report, I think, uh in December.
Okay, Rob, just noting that in your um in your notes, uh the notes don't reflect the top grant. It says top grant, being applied for, but we actually, we did receive it. So you know, for next time, you might wanna update the notes.
Oh, that
Yep.
that was just the listing of the project, yeah, I
Okay.
I I've truncated this because there were several different quarters and and um you couldn't read it if I put it on eight and a half by eleven, so
Okay.
yeah, okay.
Just so you know, if someone is reading this, they might think that um you've just received the five hundred thousand.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um the vac hog truck, um we did receive that, it is operational. Um and our WQIP funding uh has been applied for and we're uh just awaiting payment on that. Uh the Millwood Sidewalk, and I must have missed that in my um in my notes, because I do have an update on the Millwood Sidewalks, that is another project that's finally moving forward. So um Con Ed has been out there in the last couple weeks completing their utility pole replacement, so we need that in order to be able to complete the final design, I think they were at, we're at ninety-five percent. But that project looks to be going forward and based on uh conversation with Jeff Gaspar, our town engineer, we expect to go out to bid for that project actually this winter, so that was something that's been delayed for quite a while. Uh State DOT, there were approvals needed from them, approvals needed from Con Ed. Uh quite a bit of work, but that project looks like it is moving forward.
The DOT really held it up.
They did, it was held up in DOT uh real estate, there were some property takings that had to happen and and their real estate division had to review them.
A long time. Yeah.
Um we actually so much as cut a check at one point, because we thought we had the delineation of the property that we were acquiring. And uh then they changed their mind and reduced the amount of property and we doubled hit the check and go, it it's been, it's been a process, but it does look like it's moving forward now. Uh the next couple projects I'm gonna talk about are New York State DOT projects uh that are happening in Newcastle, not town projects. Uh but projects to be aware of. So uh the first is the culvert replacement at on uh Route one-seventeen, Old House Lane. Um they were originally expected to complete that work in twenty-twenty-five. Um they have not, uh and this is um uh State DOT has to submit plans to Westchester County for a temporary water line and that hasn't even happened yet, so the they will need Department of Health approval before they can even uh finish plan. So now we're looking at probably spring to summer for any work to happen there. Uh I did confirm when that work is done, it will be a full road closure for some period of time, probably several weeks um while they work on that, so. Um we had a meeting with DOT several months ago, but their meeting says we get closer to the project to better inform the town of exactly what the closure will be, what the detours will be, what they can expect.
Several weeks closure of one-seventeen at Old House Lane.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well.
If they're working during the school year, um is is the schools are
We're hoping that the work is gonna happen over the summer, they're aware of that and we've made that request to them. Um and the other project that we're working on, there's no update, but we believe, we've been told that the two projects wouldn't happen simultaneously and that the Old House Lane project would be first. Uh there's a culvert replacement uh at the Sawmill River Parkway, um by Quaker Bridge Road and the Horace Freely statue. Um again, no update on that right now, but we, I think uh once they finalize the first project, they'll probably start working on plans for the second. Uh I mentioned a moment ago in the other section, the relief sewer uh on Joan Corwin Way. Uh that project, again, the the bid opening has not happened yet. Uh the earliest any construction would happen would be the spring of twenty-twenty-six and it's probably not looking that soon at this point. Um and I and I mentioned a moment ago uh in the other section as well, the extension of the county trunk line, I mentioned that because that was the uh town partnering with that, so um not expected till twenty-seven or twenty-eight at this point. Uh I think next we have some federal government projects, that is the um Sawmill River Parkway, Great Crossing, New Line of Nation. Um we are, New York State received a grant, I think about two-point-six million dollars for the design of this project. Um we have not had an update yet from New York State Supervisor Tip. And myself met with uh Governor Hokel's local representative Luke Powell a couple weeks ago and uh he offered to look into this for us and see if he can get an update, so we'll share that when he uh when he gets back to us.
What, were they supposed to have some sort of kickoff meeting and that never took place and it was postponed and never rescheduled?
They were. Correct. Yep, yeah, it was, it was scheduled and then uh that was the last update we had from the state was that there was a kickoff meeting scheduled that was canceled uh and not rescheduled to this point. Okay, uh next to section or final section are the in-house projects that we're currently working on. Uh the first is the feasibility study for uh an RFP for the sidewalk along Millwood Road uh between North County Trailhead and Getney Park. Uh that is something we're hoping to get completed in two thousand and twenty-six. Uh we've looked at that, there are it it will probably, based on this the study that we had, require a design that would move the roadway slightly. Uh and we've gotta see if we can get approval for that, so that's um why we need a feasibility study there and our engineering department will work on that.
Rob, to recall, what was our, you know I guess a temporary conclusion that we would stick to the side of the the road, the Getney Park side of the road?
I actually think it was the other side, which was problematic too.
Somehow
There there weren't great solutions there, I think the Getney Park side, I think the house just north of it, I think that would was causing a problem with the driveway, if I recall.
It's too bad, cause you could do do a road through the park.
Yeah. Um and they were also, I think they need to do a survey to determine exactly where the right-of-way there is and and which where there's leeway, where there's room to work on the project. Uh we talked about, I think uh last meeting or the meeting before, the sidewalk improvements on one-seventeen. Uh phase one, we have already um, the survey's been complete and we're awaiting plans from the design engineer. That's just the area right around the mobile station, uh and we partnered with the contractor, the firehouse is using. Um they will be uh once a design engineer completes the um plans for that, we will work with the contractor to start developing a timeline. Uh and then Jeff did an in-house feasibility study. Um we're waiting till we finish the first phase and then we're gonna take a look at the second phase and kinda get a cost estimate on that. And uh I think we need to do some surveying work. Jeff has a an estimate of where he thinks the sidewalk would go, but we need a complete survey to be uh to be certain. Uh the next one's been on here for a little while, we actually, there was some uh progress in the last couple weeks. Um this is the uh drainage around Ibiza and the Family Bridges, that building, unfortunately, when we get real heavy rains uh they come down King Street, he was seeing some flooding in the building there. And staff went out there the last time that they got a significant rainfall and kinda noticed that it looked like some of the catch basins uh were collecting debris and that was kinda preventing the water from draining off and going up into the sidewalk, so um they're kinda, they're paying special attention to that now. Once they freed the catch basin of the debris, uh the flooding was kind of alleviated, so uh they're just gonna keep an eye on that. Doesn't look right now like we have to redesign anything, but we're gonna keep an eye on it. Uh the proposed sewer service at Amsterdam Park, uh we did receive a CREST grant, an amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for this. The board approved uh in October, Batty and Watson to do the survey work, so we're gonna begin uh once we get the survey work, we'll look to design that sewer line. Um that's the first step, then we'll be able to install the bathrooms at Amsterdam and and uh that CREST grant also included some improvements and some finishing on the upper level at that house at Amsterdam. Uh the next couple uh
I have to say, that'll be great for the campers.
It will be excellent for the campers when we can install a couple bathrooms there and uh if we're able to finish that top area off um that will help us out in inclement weather that they'll be able to go into that building. You know, right now, we're having to use one of the schools uh when we have bad weather and we're having to bus the kids there and sit there. So if we have some facilities indoors there, um that'll be helpful to them. Uh next couple, we're talking about town hall and uh I'll probably jump ahead and say that um we did the town hall needs assessment and town staff, uh in particular Jeff Gaspar, the engineer, Sabrina and myself reviewed seven responses to the RFP. Uh we did hear from uh two of the candidates last week and uh we will be making a selection to uh perform the needs assessment. Uh that said, some of the other stuff that needs to happen in town hall that we're already aware of, the roof and the HVAC replacements. Um expansion of any facilities here, mechanical replacements, parking lot improvements, these have all been put on hold um pending the results of this uh needs assessment. Um I will point out uh Supervisor Tip, I will have a uh a proposal for you. We are working on some short-term improvements to the parking lot. They don't involve repaving, but just involve making it look a little bit better and changing the circulation a bit. So um I, Jeff uh Gaspar and Miguel Fabril, they presented a a couple of plans uh last week to bargain myself for our review and uh we're gonna kinda pick one and uh we'll bring it to the board and show them what we're looking for. So it does include greening some of that area that's uh covered in the item four right now and uh just changing the circulation and formalizing some of the parking spots, so.
Okay, I think we'll be very interested in seeing that, it sounds great.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely looks good and and uh I asked them to include maybe some uh some plantings too on the other side of that.
Okay.
Okay, the recycling and parks garage, uh building repairs, uh the board awarded that to the contractor SNP on September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, uh work on that is expected to be completed by the end of the year. Uh the Chappack Boiler Replacement Project, that has been completed. Um the town hall boiler replacement, that has been completed as well. Uh renovation uh for ADA compliance, the town hall bathrooms. So uh last summer, we did complete the men's room up here, I think there are two more bathrooms that they're looking to upgrade, I think one uh I think actually they're both in the police department, uh and Walter should be getting to that in twenty-twenty-six. Um our most recent, uh well, our second most recent CREST grant um award uh is for the replacement of the Amsterdam Park Playground. Uh I recommended that because the summer camp has been using that quite a bit, it's an older playground. Uh and so we got a hundred thousand dollar CREST grant to replace that, we should be working on that in uh and so we got a hundred thousand dollar CREST grant to replace that. We should be working on that in the spring of twenty twenty six. Um and the last thing I mentioned, and I said second most recent uh CREST grant, we met with Mike Wolfensen and Stefan Yarback today uh regarding the nine eleven memorial. Um they have secured a sixty thousand dollar grant.
Oh wow.
Oh good.
That's amazing news.
I'm glad to hear this.
Very glad to hear it.
Yeah, so he said he just got notification yesterday and I saw the letter, so we will work that comes courtesy of Senator Harkam
That's great.
asked of the other CREST grant. Um so that's fantastic, uh.
Oh, glad.
We will be sure to thank Senator Harkam.
He has uh uh we had the heat pumps, the motorcycles, uh he's been good to us, so uh
Mm-hmm, yes.
so that's great. So uh we met with Stefan and Michael today.
And so has Assemblyman Bernard.
Of course, of course.
We get grant from him too, so I just wanna say.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um but this uh this sixty thousand dollar award was really unexpected because that wasn't something that was put forth. I uh credit Mike Wolfensen for that. That was something he did independent of town staff and uh.
Yeah. Very good work. Now, is he going, well, I guess this will be conversation, will he be using the money in place of what we budgeted or is it for for extras?
They. Of course. Um their their proposal, and I think he's gonna come back, I think he'll be prepared to come on December second and show the board some of the renderings that we saw today. Um they are happy now because if you remember, he had uh the original scope of his project was around a hundred and twenty five thousand. We authorized sixty thousand uh from town funds and now he is hoping to be able to complete uh the full scope of his project, so.
Yes. Right, I mean, I don't mind, we have the budget and he promised and he want if he wants the bells and whistles, that's fine.
Yeah.
The only thing I will say, you all will talk about it when he comes, is I don't I would like to avoid anything that complicates the maintenance going forward
So that was a good discussion.
and decreases that cost and perhaps, you know, leads to some problems that we had originally.
Yeah, so that was a discussion that we had today and he uh Stefan assures me that oh they don't want that either because Stefan now is coming back, I don't know, ten or twelve years later to uh redesign this project, so um they talked about a couple of the things. One of them is that uh the the filter was getting clogged with leaves, so they have a uh they have a way to prevent that to remove I don't know what it does. I think he said chops up the leaves or in any case it doesn't allow the filter to be blocked by the leaves. Uh the other problem was the pump, the way that it was situated last time, it was often seizing and freezing up because it lacked the water supply and it was running uh without a water supply coming through, so um they've taken some of the notes from what didn't work last time and incorporated them into uh what we hope is a better project this time around.
Okay.
So.
I I I just wanna be sure that they do a proper inspection because those sound like problems that should have been caught.
Um I think so, so.
You know, so I just. We just wanna make sure that
To to hear them talk.
we don't run into different problems, but for for the same reasons.
Agreed, so he's working, they're working with uh with Ike and his staff, they're working with Jeff Gaspar and his staff. Um so there's a lot of town input this time. I'm not sure what happened last time around, um
Okay.
One of the things they weren't happy with was last time around. You know, the town has required, we have a procurement policy, so they went out to bid. They didn't like the vendor that we selected and didn't believe they did proper work, so um you know, we'll have to follow the same policy this time with the procurement. Um and uh hopefully, you know, uh you're required to pick the lowest responsible bidder. We'll do our diligence and make sure that the company we select has experience doing this type of work. If they don't, we'll be able to disqualify them, so um hopefully we'll get somebody that can do this.
Okay.
Rob, can I just ask um regarding the in-house projects?
Hmm.
I know you talked about something about the downstairs at Chappack. I know where the like bathrooms and the dressing rooms are.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And there was like three, two pairs of walls and whatnot.
Yeah.
Did I think you said that that was being worked on or that?
It is being worked on, so actually Rachel uh brought that up with Walter. Um he came up with a proposal. Um they're gonna finish the floor. I think they're gonna leave it as concrete, but kinda like polished concrete. And he is going to do the uh the lower paneling and then finish those walls and um the issue, what happened is if you remember those uh that area flooded and the flood had to do with the drainage and we think when Toll Brothers was working out there, the drainage line was hit. Was kind of a he said, she said, nobody took responsibility and was difficult to pinpoint, but um we didn't wanna install that while they were still out there working, they're done working in that area, so we can reinstall the drywall and then finish the walls downstairs, so uh that is on Walter's radar and he's uh he's working on that.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I have.
That's it? Okay.
That's it. You want one?
Thank you, Rob.
You all are very busy.
That was well done. I just wanna say um for the past two years since I've been town supervisor, I I've asked for these quarterly reports. Those had stopped for a while, but now we're having quarterly financial reports and quarterly capital projects reports, which we had usually at the beginning of the year and then it was really difficult to to keep track of what was going on, so
Yeah.
I think this has been really organized and very helpful for for the board, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, um we're up to administrative items.
Uh not a lot tonight. We have a retroactive payment plans
Thank you.
Is the additional one? Additional?
Uh November seventh. Uh we have the adoption of minutes from October twenty twenty five. Adoption of uh monthly reports for October twenty twenty five. Uh we have a resolution authorizing the establishment of a petty cash account. Um the town really hasn't had that in the past, uh based on guidance from the Controller's Office. We would we'd like to establish a five hundred dollar petty cash account. And it's really difficult sometimes if we just need something quick from the hardware store or something quick. It it's hard to be able to, you know, somebody has to go and buy it and get reimbursed for it. So if we just have a petty cash system where somebody uh returns a receipt, they get reimbursed on the petty cash and uh we're able to do it. These are for small expenditures, so.
Who keeps track of that?
Uh the Controller's Office will, uh Carl and and Diana will keep track of that.
Okay.
Uh we have an authorization to use town vehicle for ski trips. Um so they're they're asking for authorization to either use a town vehicle, which has been done in the past, or to reimburse uh a personal vehicle um for the mileage expense. And what happens is when we send the ski trips up, we do have five different chaperones on each of the buses. But what we do have is a staff member that takes a vehicle up kind of in advance of the trip. They go to make sure everything's set up, all the I guess payments are complete, the logistics happen. And it's important also to have another vehicle there in case there's some kind of injury or something that happens where um somebody has to stay with a camper and that's happened in the past. We've had instances where um skiing, where uh I think somebody broke a leg. Think somebody got a concussion one time. In those instances, it's nice to have a staff member be able to stay with that camper or accompany them to uh wherever they're receiving treatment, wait while the parents are coming up, so uh it's important to have a you know, if everybody rode the bus, they all go home together and so this makes it easy. So we've done that in the past and we're just asking the board to uh approve that once again. Jeremy, for the final time.
What is it?
We have auction bid results, two thousand nine Altima for two thousand dollars and a two thousand and thirteen F one fifty for two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll be the final tally on my last day.
I'll give you the final tally. I put it on my screen and I didn't print it, cause I anticipated that question.
You'll give it to me later.
I will give it to you. Um authorization to approve the twenty twenty six refuse and recycling schedule and the uh SAB insert. This is an annual mailing that they send out uh with the town's refuse and recycling schedule. The SAB always asks to uh include something in that mailing and that was part of the package. Uh we have the authorization to reimburse uh plumbing permit for the building department. This was just a duplicate payment. Um we're just returning the second payment. And we have the authorization to approve two different fences, so uh you may or may not have noticed, there's some uh metal fencing along uh the duck pond. It's kind of leaning and uh doesn't look good and it may not be particularly safe, so we've got a quotation from Eagle Fence for sixty nine hundred to complete that uh replacement. And uh we've got the split rail fence or at Getney Park that's around the playground there. Uh that's in disrepair. It's uh older wood and it's uh kind of rotting, so uh they're gonna replace that. The estimate for that is fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty and that's to yaboo fencing. And uh that's all I have for administrative items.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Uh that's it for the work session, uh so may I have a motion to close the work session, adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Rob, any any announcements?
Uh the only announcement is uh next week is uh Thanksgiving. So the Town Hall will be closed on the twenty seventh and twenty eighth, Thursday and Friday.
Okay. And that takes me to the supervisor's report and I was also going to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. We will not be having a public meeting next week, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And the one thing I like to say about Thanksgiving is um everything in moderation, including moderation. And that is from Oscar Wilde, so it's very good advice for Thanksgiving. Um I would like to let everyone know, as you know, that we we announced the formation of an Economic Advisory Task Force some weeks ago. We received very robust uh set of responses to that. We received twenty three applica- uh twenty two applications. We've started interviewing and you know, we anticipate the interviews will go through uh early December. So we will, you know, hope to convene by early, by mid-December. We'll be very close to the holidays. So I would anticipate the ta- that the task force would convene starting next January. Cause we'll be, we know we'll be hitting on the holidays then, so um where we have great applicants, um it's too bad we can't have everyone. The task force is limited to up to eleven people, so um I just wanna let everyone know that we are in progress with that. Um I also want to announce that in observance, this year in observance of International Human Rights Day, we'll be having a program co-sponsored by the Holocaust and Human Rights Committee and the Committee on Inclusion and Belonging. Uh it's a program called Letters from Anne and Martin. And it's a forty minute theater performance regarding the life and experiences of um Anne Frank and Martin Luther King Junior. And it's um it should be very interesting in the fact that they were both born uh in the same year. But you know, their experiences obviously are very different and span different uh decades, but it's going to be about their experiences regarding living in climate of hate and the importance of uh social justice in the world, so that should be very interesting. I hope people attend. And on Friday, uh December fifth, we are going to have uh another bridge gallery reveal. This will be the fourth mural reveal and um in a public mural project sponsored by the Arts and Culture Committee. So thank you to Arts and Culture and thank you Jen for uh being the liaison to Arts and Culture, being part of part of that effort. There was a mistake in the past newsletter. It said that this reveal would be at four o'clock, but it will actually be at four thirty. So please don't get there too early, it'll be at four thirty. Under the bridge, um you'll meet the local artist who is uh who has painted this fourth mural, uh Mara Van Fleet, and it'll be an opportunity to meet her and celebrate our our reveal. And right after that, the town will be having uh the Chamber of Commerce sponsored wide around town from five to eight P M, so you'll have a chance to shop local, get holiday gifts and um you know, enjoy the the lights, the holiday lights. So that should be great. Uh we hope people come to town and enjoy all that it has to offer. And I do have a question about the holiday lights. Um so they look great and we were wondering when the snowflakes are coming up.
I thought they were doing those.
They're not, they're not up yet, so I was wondering, do they come up after Thanksgiving or is it just, you know?
I was. Um I would have to check with Bart. It may just be timing. I I don't know what his guys uh
The stage. Yeah.
I will get an update tomorrow. I thought they were working on those, I.
Okay, just wondering. Alrighty. Alrighty, that's it for my supervisor's report, unless anyone wants to report something that I haven't.
Nope.
Okay. Okay, Rob, any announce, any um administrators report?
No, I don't really have an update on anything right now.
Okay. Alright, that brings us to public comment period. Anyone with a pub- public comment, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself and uh where you live. Anyone for public comment? Not in the audience? Okay, any any hands raised online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, no hands online either, so that will close the public comment period. Um let's see, Rob, you've gone over all of the items on the consent agenda and um and the proposed actions, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's start with the consent agenda.
Alright, I move to adopt the items one through eight as listed on the consent agenda.
Second, pardon me, second.
All in favor?
And
Aye.
I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand two hundred ninety seven dollars and ninety nine cents listed on the summary AP check register in detail voucher detail report. Both dated November seventh, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, November seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh I move to accept resignation resignation, pardon me, of Richard Brownell as an alternate member of the planning board effective November fifth, twenty twenty five. Uh we thank Dick for his years of dedicated service and he certainly needs so. We really are incredibly grateful.
Second.
Okay, yeah, we really are very grateful and he spent many, many years on the planning board. I don't think we have a
Dick.
a number, but I I do wanna honor his service, very dedicated service, so thank you, Dick. Um all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the following reappointments to the planning board as reflected below.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Um go ahead, one more.
Um I move to authorize the appointment of Jennifer Weitzman as a member of the Beautification Advisory Board for a three-year term effective December first, twenty twenty five to December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to authorize the appointment of Carl Shulley Golden Acting Controller to Controller at the annual salary of one hundred seventy three thousand effective November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to authorize the waiver to tax penalties for SBL eighty one dash eleven dash two dash forty seven for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five second half school tax due and payable without penalty through dr- through January thirty first, twenty twenty five and the twenty twenty five town county tax due and payable without penalty through April thirtieth, twenty twenty five for the total amount of two thousand twenty one dollars and fifty two cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize to waive the rental fees of the community center for the Chabad of Armonk to host its annual Hanukkah celebration in the north, lighting on Sunday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty five from two thirty P M to eight thirty P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.